Officially designated newspapers indicating that the meeting will take place in the city's center at six thirty PM on the state. The fire exits are located in the far right corner of the back and are unable to be immediately left to the front. Per resolution one fifty-six dash twenty, establishing rules of conduct in the following called meetings, please be advised that all all members of the public must step up to the designated microphone, state for the record their name and address before addressing mayor or councilor.
Councilman Heen.
Here.
Councilman Hurley.
Here.
Councilman Mito.
Here.
Councilman Slakbar.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Peter.
Here.
I look forward to you to live in the United States of America, into the collective which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and ever to be destroyed.
We got approval of minutes for the regular reading, March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
I have one piece of correspondence. Dear Borough Rockaway Council members, I am ready to bring your attention to pressing issue that is affecting my property and my three of my neighbors, case of property. Over the past few months, I have noticed a significant increase in groundwater in my basement as well as standing water in my back and side yard. After conducting some investigation, I have discovered that the issue may be stemming from leaking asbestos cement pipes from the water tank or possibly from an underground stream from the land directly behind, which is owned by the Borough Rockaway. The United States EPA has determined that asbestos cement pipes do deteriorate and breakage frequency increases with age. Given the potential health hazards of this asbestos exposure and the ongoing flooding problem on my property, I currently request the assistance of the Borough Rockaway to resolve the issue now. Specifically, I seek confirmation of the source of this issue and guidance on how the town can assist in the evening. But the issue is indeed caused by leaking asbestos cement pipes that pose a serious health risk, owing to the leak from our family potentially to the water, including additionally flooding problems causing significant damage to my property and affecting all courses of groundwater issue, including whether it's that part of the asbestos cement pipe, um, extreme guidance on the appropriate set of remedial issues, including unnecessary repairs and replacements of infrastructure. Assistance from Borough Rockaway addressing the flag following my property, which may involve drainage solutions and the source of other measures to mitigate the impact. I understand that addressing the issue may require a ton of resources by urgent Borough Rockaway, and Borough Rockaway prioritizes the health and safety of its residents. I don't know what you want to accept. Cooperatives provide additional information or access to my property that is necessary to resolve this matter, with technical expertise and attention to this urgent matter, report to your proper response and action. Sincerely, Michael Crichton. So yeah, this property, uh, very familiar with it, uh, a former, uh, DPW super is also very familiar with the property behind, uh, credit behind, can you drive it?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, just a lot of groundwater back there. We have runoff coming off of Crestwood. We have, uh, underground streams in the area that are just historical to the property. And I understand this property owner also had modified his backyard without, or, you know, just, uh, but there is water back there. There's been a couple of residents back there have modified or put in, I'll say drainage systems to mitigate the natural water coming down, coming down the hill. Uh, we've had water leak, uh, detection multiple times over the course of years. And it has recently, as in the past month or two, they were back there, uh, doing that, uh, with nothing, uh, nothing, coming out of it.
So, can I comment?
Yeah, please.
Mayor. That area is prone to heavy groundwater. Everybody knows that it's in that area, travel area off the sidewalks. Above that, Crestwood Road is natural springs. Travel across the road, you can see the water coming off the mountain. That area is in check by outside vendors, water leaks more than once, more than twice, more than three, four, five times for the same reason. I'm sure public worksmen up there investigate to find nothing leaking. The water main travels through the woods. It's been here since nineteen seventy-six.
Yep.
Yes, asbestos pipe, asbestos pipe's not always dangerous. When the breaks happen, clear it out through the mains, which is always on that flush. So maybe that's recommendation, public worksmen do the sampling of the main, uh, line of the line.
Yep.
Which, well, I think not yet.
Again, they did that the last month. They actually turned off.
They did, yeah.
They actually turned off the motors from the.
You shut the pumps off.
The pumps off, so they're not hearing this buzzing.
So the job is done. So unfortunate groundwater issues.
But like I said, uh, multiple neighbors have taken under themselves that to correct it, mitigate it, just to keep it off their property.
It's unfortunate things.
It's, it's not, it's, it's just naturally occurring. It's breaking, so the springs coming off, you know, even from the, right, the top of the mountain, you know, off of the top part of Mount Pleasant, it just kind of comes down across Crestwood and just keeps.
It keeps eating down.
It's a working, not far from the problem. Yep.
So.
So motion to accept your correspondence?
Motion.
Second.
Mayor.
Aye.
Uh, but I will have a conversation directly with, uh, Mr. Crichton just to, um, you know, talk about this, uh, and everything that's been done. I'm not sure how much he knows it, if it could be a court statement also regarding this.
He was giving the paperwork.
Okay. So I will, uh, I'll address him directly.
Can you keep that a key to it up now?
Okay, thanks. Country words, that's what it means.
Good evening there, fellow council members and our public. Um, DPW has been working on transitioning from winter to spring. All the winter equipment has been stored away. Uh, field work in preparation of fields has been slowed, uh, due to all the rain in the last few weeks. Uh, kudos to the DPW team along with the Mars Hills DPW guys for getting down to Tummy Field ready for the baseball season. A lot of work and a lot of effort put into that. Also soccer has been able to use it the past week or so as well. Uh, the welding quarry is now open and making asphalt, so Billy and the team will be, uh, stepping up their game to do more pop over there. Uh, recently, the only, um, asphalt place open for us was in the Totoa area. So we're, you know, Billy would send a guy down there and everybody who's known of that, it would take two, three hours just to get the stuff and another hour to get back here. So it wasn't really very productive, although we were doing it once a week. Um, DPW has been also cleaning up window, uh, wind blown debris from town property and roadways. Uh, also, if you guys noticed around town, uh, DPW has also been putting up the new banners. I believe we have twenty-five of them. Uh, the idea was to put them all in the center of town. Uh, I don't know, it's, to me, the blue really pops.
They look really nice.
Yeah, the, the blue really pops with the gold, so they look great. Uh, whoever decided on that, really nice job on that. Uh, they're still, uh, cleaning out storm drains and doing repairs of berms from the winter season. Director Hopler met this morning with the contractor that is responsible for doing the paving and road work at Mount Pleasant. The plan is for them, weather permitting, to start the work within the next month. And I also need a closed session for personnel matter, and that is my report.
Motion to accept your report, uh, Councilman Smith.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll give you the latest polls from our police department. They've been very busy. So, uh, statistics for the previous month, month, March first to the thirty-first, they had fifteen hundred and eighty calls for service. They had forty-five hundred vehicle crash investigations, fifty-three stops, seventy citations, twenty-four women violations, thirty-nine parking violations, and three arrests. So they've been busy. As far as that, that's all I have. If anybody needs me to bring anything to the chief of police extension.
Motion to accept your report, uh, Councilman Smith.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Councilman Slakbar.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Borough residents. Uh, ordinance meeting, uh, let me schedule probably next week to somebody work out, uh, a meeting with the attorney, Mr. Bell, and, uh, town engineer, try to work out, uh, initial stormwater issue we have. Along with that, that meeting will be held until next week. We'll be discussing rural things again from contractors. Uh, rental properties, how we're going to be doing inspections on rental properties is going to be discussion. Also going back to our saunas, dayframes and portable sauna in our town, it's going to be part of our discussions. Environmental Committee, we met last night. It was really nice meeting, was really impressed how long on the agenda. So the river cleanup, again, May eighteenth, eight o'clock in the morning to twelve, I'm sure it will pass a little bit. And the mayor's already assigned to his favorite spot, New Street.
Yeah, they like to keep me away from that.
He was already giving it last night. It's kind of funny. But, uh, Patty, we need bags and gloves.
Okay.
So, let me comment on that. Uh, so basically, you see, we have a stock, but it was actually in Markway Hardware, uh, and Richie did, uh, offer to go in there. Uh, we're going to donate rubber gloves and bags, uh, for the river cleanup.
Okay.
Oh, if you want, you can come here if you need it, just let me know.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, good evening. Joyce Farm. So, um, we already contacted the MUA before everybody gives us all sorts of stuff. Um, I asked for pickers, garbage bags, and gloves, but thank you for the donations. I'll take them if I don't get any. So.
Let me know.
Okay, yeah, good.
If you need.
Okay, awesome.
Then, then one of your next times in Markway Hardware, you can just talk to him about additional, additional things that, that, on the, on the.
My deal's there, we should probably take what Markway Hardware's offering.
Yes.
Offering, we should take that with the idea, rather that there another debt, yeah?
Exactly, yeah, because of the bag of what I have a glove.
Yeah, statement.
That Patty had left me last year. Okay, thank you.
On top of that, uh, I do have a flyer here I shared with the clerk today, which should be going on social media. We also spoke about hopefully having a sign that can be done prior to.
For what? I'm sorry.
For the.
On Murphy, yes.
So we can have a sign on fire, so at least a week we can have prior to the event. That's really on the environmental committee. Oh, it was a really good meeting. Oh, I got to add, on this weekend, we'll be, uh, touring around town some of the waterways of town. There's small parks and screenings, small ponds, documenting width, depth, length. I don't think those are ever done in town before. So it's something I wanted to take, take, which is a good move. Uh, it doesn't need to be documented where you own the whole properties. But more of that, I'd like to bring that up as we just had meeting last week. As you know, doing a banner program, uh, it's, I understand, about fifteen people already applying, pay to, uh, have their loved one, past and present on their poles around town. Again, some of their name, Borough Rockaway, honor them, American flag on the backside, have a nice, great feel on the outside of the road. The other thing about Memorial Day, when we did the anniversary for the organization, we had flags, don't we, like, house engineer in our attorney's office, they'll need the flags. The flags are all happening. So I told me we can look at these flags, inspect them, that and a bunting, the bunting's also shot. We need to replace a bunting, it goes on the bridge. And then we had some money left over, I believe, from the, uh, holiday anniversary. But maybe we can inspect the flags, see how many we need and replace that some. Along with that, I had a great idea, I don't know if it's possible, not put a cable across the river for the season greeting sign. I think it'd be nice to put a flag way across everywhere, show it off. I think it would really look nice over there, just fly it for Memorial Day throughout, fourth of July. Just a suggestion. I'm sure we have flags and put up there. On top of that, doing my Memorial Day, uh, work right now, I am setting up the crate. I have to talk to my crate coordinator and see where she's at with it, because she hasn't seen a lot of people respond so far. So we participate with Rockaway Touch and then we network with each other, we use each other's resources. I was up there, and I thought I went, I had a little conversation with some employees up there, uh, Coria said, Farm Marshal was up there. And they're very impressed with that. He, uh, went to court against a business in here in town a few months. And when I say he met me, I wouldn't tell you about me from the, from the, I served that, uh, those are, happy to hear that. You got to do those jobs.
No, I've been getting comments back from the police and, you know, they've actually been to court more in two weeks than they did in four years at the precipice.
Impressed and happy to see better action.
Absolutely.
I just feel like there's more communication. It seems like, it just seemed like precipice didn't want anything to send it's us and walk away and that we're not getting that same feeling from township, which is a nice.
The community, I just walked up there, see the police chief, and I hear his story at the flap. Thank you. I want to say thank you. But that's very important, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, a couple of points, uh, I have committed to the Memorial Day association and to the veterans that, uh, those flags are the, the pole flags are the memories of.
Right.
The veterans. Uh, obviously they'll fly for whatever the time period is, you know, a couple of weeks, uh, during Memorial Day, but also, uh, for a week or two, uh, however we can do it around Veterans Day.
Yeah, good thing.
So I've heard it, uh, I was up, you know, for a short period of time. Obviously, it'll be down before the holiday, stuff goes up before Thanksgiving, but we're going to make sure it's up there for Veterans Day.
Well, I'll make a comment on that, because the one neighbor purchased a bear is one of your old neighbors, and he's a virgin right now. It was ecstatic to have, you sent crazy emails, like, you couldn't, couldn't believe it, please, thank you. Thank you.
And then, uh, you know, for the river cleanup, as we've done in, uh, the past years, uh, I want to commit two DPW workers in a truck to help out on that Saturday morning.
Perfect.
Got a motion? Second?
Second.
All fair.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, in the bunting, uh, you know, I think you talked about the, the bunting on the bridge.
Right.
That they need to be replaced or they do need to replace and.
Yeah, that's me, so.
I might have some good news on that. Billy has a new set that has.
He does?
Yep, I believe that's what I was told. So I will confirm that.
Yeah, fine.
Have their features, but I will confirm, but I'm pretty sure I heard that he had a whole new set.
Good, excellent. I love to hear that.
Okay, awesome. Good, appreciate that.
Make it sound a little bit.
Motion to accept your report, uh, Councilman Slakbar?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
Councilman Hurley.
Thank you, Mayor. All council members and our members of the public. We'll start with the finance committee and move right to our accounts payable. I approve that the bills presented to Borough Rockaway for payment by the Borough's evidence by proper vouchers be referred to a committee or unit contract and for saying or endorsed by them and approved by appropriate action of councils that they are to be paid.
So.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
And very briefly, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned to you that, as I sit on the, um, CDVG board, the, um, the board from the county, uh, we had met to, as an entire county, uh, to approve all of the allocations for the twenty twenty-four funding. Uh, right now, what we're waiting for and waiting patiently is for, uh, housing and urban development from the federal government to actually notify the county of what their allocations will be for twenty-four. So as soon as we get that information, uh, I'll pass that along and I'll be in touch with, uh, Ms. Richey and let you, let us all know what, um, what we've, uh, been allocated to by the federal government. As you recall, our twenty twenty-four application is for water main and fire hydrant, uh, improvements and upgrades on New Street. So that's our twenty twenty-four CDVG. And in and around town, we'll be hosting the Cub Scouts going for their bear badge tomorrow at the museum to learn about the history of Rockaway Borough. So looking forward to have the most, uh, ones that are growing up into their scouting career and, uh, they'll be over at the museum with this stuff. That's very important.
Motion to accept your report, Councilman Hurley?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman O'Connell?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, an update, uh, from recreation. I attended our last Tuesday recreation, oh, sorry, the Tuesday of March twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, an update from recreation, spring sport, so it turns out. Sports, uh, spring sport illustration numbers are great across the board, all in all sports. Uh, Little League opening day is scheduled for April twentieth at ten AM in Flanders Field. Uh, also, Lily is, again, attempting this year to host the Challenger League on June ninth, and I'm not sure if it canceled multiple times, so again, June ninth, and I believe that was going to be at Donatoni. Uh, Eagle Scout project will be painting Smith Field buildings in the coming months. And also Recreation is now hosting Rutgers mandatory vintage clinic. Uh, if anybody's interested, contact the, uh, for more details. Uh, then our next recreation meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-third, seven PM here at the government meeting center. Uh, that is my report for recreation. If anybody has any questions.
Motion to accept your report, Councilman O'Connell?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
Council President Breslin?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, several things. Um, I attended the Board of Health meeting this week in the month of March. Um, thirty-one inspections were completed. Seven of those were of the new lead inspections that are necessary for teen restaurants. Um, the Board of Health did issue two summons. They both were for, um, retail establishments that were selling flavored vapes, which are no longer permitted. Um, we are quite behind with dog and cat licensing. Uh, we are short a hundred and twenty dog licenses and fifteen cat licenses compared to last year. They do see, um, late applications coming in through March and through April, but shortly they will be gathering a list to determine, um, how many dogs and cats either moved out of town or are deceased, but, um, will move forward toward the summons that they will be given. The Board of Health has gotten feedback from vets that participate in the rabies voucher program that their reimbursement is extremely low. Um, a vet gets six dollars to give a rabies shot when they use our voucher program. And I do think the voucher program is really well received as opposed to those towns that have you show up at the fire department with your dog and wait for an hour and a half to get a rabies shot. Um, the, the fee to the vets of six dollars hasn't gone up in fifteen years. And it's thought that vets use the program as a way to get the animals in so they've got other things, checkups and, you know, other services. But I think as busy as vets are these days, that, that program isn't as attractive. Um, we also haven't increased our license fees for dogs and cats, um, in a while. Other towns, um, do charge more. But, um, we, obviously nothing for next year, but it's something that maybe would be considered for next year with the idea that part of that could go to vets for that rabies program. Uh, we had the first reading of an ordinance for food trucks. Food trucks won't be allowed in the borough to just tootle around and park wherever they want, but this would be food trucks that are going to, um, bona fide events. Um, doesn't count if you want to have a food truck come and sit in your driveway for your private party, but these are for things like festival, food truck festivals. Uh, we did have a resident come, um, we had public, um, she was very concerned that if her dogs, uh, her puppies, rabies was not good to, for the majority of the year, that she couldn't relicense her dog, and she felt that, um, her dog whose rabies was up in June shouldn't be over vaccinated and be required to get another shot before the end of the year, but unfortunately, that's a state, um, requirement, a state regulation. Um, her vet could allow her to get a letter and not get the dog vaccinated, but I don't think her, her vet was in agreement with that. We did have an issue, um, that I'd like to bring to our attorney. Um, in applying for a license, we have a spa on Route forty-six that, um, seemingly could not provide the necessary documents for their massage practitioners around birth certificate, driver's license, um, license, um, as a practitioner. And there is some concern about, um, whether or not a new license should be provided to them, given that their paperwork is incomplete. The health officer feels that the application for licensure is far more specific than our ordinances and feels that perhaps, um, it could use the evaluation of our attorney, um, in considering whether this license should be granted. Want to add anything to that?
No, I think you, I think you had the whole.
Got it. Um, that's all for Board of Health. Uh, for the fire department, they held their monthly meeting on April third and took actions to schedule drills on April tenth and officer drills on April fifteenth. May I have a motion to approve the actions of the fire department?
Motion to approve actions of the fire department is ready.
Second.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
So if I could just add to your door, um, we do have the receptionist calling people too, to remind them that, so it's just not like, okay, fine, we're going to eat with like, uh, violation. We are making phone calls to try to, and we're finding out some have been deceased and whatever, so we are making phone calls also. Thank you.
Motion to accept your report, Council President?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All fair. Mr. Attorney?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I don't have much to report, uh, tonight. We, we've had a couple of, uh, bids come in lately. I think it's a little bit premature to, uh, report on that, but there'll be a resolution on for the next meeting to approve a little bidder. Um, and then also, as the mayor reported last time, um, I'm working out the terms of an agreement with the developer on Vanderhoof. Um, and also a little bit premature to report on that because I have a call scheduled with the attorney tomorrow. Um, and then some, uh, internal meetings with, uh, our professional regenerative, at which time I will update everybody further. Thank you.
Motion to accept your report, the attorney?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
For the mayor, here. So I'm, losing track of my days here. Uh, Monday night, uh, the council president and Councilman Smith, uh, was myself, we met at the PBA, uh, with contract negotiations, uh, but I do need a closed session to discuss that. Motion for closed session, I just, so, uh, and then also, right after this meeting, I'm meeting with the PBA again, based on the results of our closed session. So, uh, they're all at headquarters now with their PBA meetings, so they're in town, so. Um, also, right before this meeting, along with, uh, our administrator, Councilman Heans, Councilman McDonald, and our rec director, we had a meeting, as well as our planners, uh, redevelopment meeting, uh, and basically, you know, talking about redevelopment process, the review, and going over the flow chart of the steps that, you know, potential applicants, uh, do need to take, uh, trying to make sure that's streamlined, looking at costs, uh, as far as application fees or escrow for, uh, applications that would move a little bit further in the process for a concept review. Uh, really getting them through, uh, that process and then certainly when they get dropped off at land use for them to, uh, obviously do their work also. Uh, we also talked about some properties in town that are currently under contract, uh, you know, looking at concept reviews and looking at plans and, you know, things, uh, are changing by the day, so, uh, so that's moving forward.
Just add to that, we sent that a letter, the mayor's assigned, um, a letter to all the property owners that are in that redevelopment area to hopefully, you know, have them maybe understand what the redevelopment means to maybe help them, maybe see that they can fix up their properties and that they are on the redevelopment, and there is a link in there to help them, and, uh, email address for them to reach out for any questions. So we're trying to move forward, what reached out to all property owners too.
And then also, Tuesday night, I spent two hours at the Islamic Center, uh, pretty much in response to, uh, they had come to the last meeting asking for a resolution to be introduced, uh, by this council, and I refused. So basically, my response was I'll go to the Islamic Center, I'll be with them. Uh, I kind of held my stance with them, obviously, you know, they weren't happy. Uh, maybe there's something I can do with stigma free, uh, the resolution we have for that, and just, you know, add in some generic discrimination, bullying type stuff, uh, but, uh, just maintaining that anything religious or group or, you know, I won't entertain, you know, for, uh, for resolution, so, uh, that's where I stand with them, uh, so, but it was, uh, interesting experience, but, yeah. And that's a bit for me. Motion to accept your report, the mayor?
Motion.
Second.
Aye.
All fair.
Aye.
For our administrator?
Good evening, everyone. Um, we just got one item to report of April twenty-second. It's Monday night, uh, a Monday night. We will be having the Clean Communities Cleanup. It is Earth Night, and we'll be doing the area of any deal in the recreation.
What date is it?
Uh, Monday, April twenty-second. I'm going to say from three thirty to, uh, three thirty to six thirty, I'm worried it's still wide out, so I'll be like.
Uh, budget, what are we introducing now?
Next week, next week, uh, next meeting, we will be, uh, adopting our budget. And that is also the public hearing.
Motion to accept your report, Attorney.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All fair. For our clerk.
Just one thing for me. Hydrogeologic, the contractor who's doing the cleanup behind, the ongoing cleanup behind Two Wall Street, has reached out to Lieutenant Richardson and I, asking that we, once again, waive fees for parking permits or 10 parking permits for one month for the residents or business employees that generally park in that parking lot because they will be disrupting them for two, three weeks. We did it in the past, a few years ago, we did the same thing for them. Because it is, again, it's a contamination cleanup. So we did make that decision. So Lieutenant Richardson is in favor of the fees being waived and the parking being issued, so. My motion, yeah, motion for it.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. All fair.
And then my only other thing is the financial disclosure statement window has opened. So if you haven't already filled it out, if you could fill it out by the both of you.
Did you send it?
Yeah. If you didn't get it, let me know. Because it goes to the email address that was originally registered for the bank of disclosure. I can check that.
Did you send it?
Yeah.
Motion to accept your report, clerk.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All fair.
All right.
Resolutions tonight, 67-24, accept reservation of order utility supervisor. 68-24, refund pet licensing over theme, Andrea Perpah. 69-24, appropriate engineering cost, sanitary sewer flow meter, flow metering.
Motion to approve resolutions and consent agenda commencing with 67-24, all including the 69-24.
All second.
Councilman Mews?
Yes.
Councilman Hurley?
Yes.
Councilman McDonald?
Yes.
Councilman Slatbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Council President Brezner?
Yes.
Let go for meeting to follow.
Good evening. Joyce Farme, if you have to go up there. Okay, fine. First of all, thank you for the two DPW and truck for the 18th. I was going to ask for it to be put on the bulletin board, but you guys beat me to it. Can we do two weeks, if that's all possible?
Yeah.
Two weeks, two weeks. You rock, thanks. So from whatever to the 18th, I'd appreciate it. The attorney, a quick question. You started out your, your report with bidders, but you're not going to discuss it until you get more bids. Go after the, for what?
The McKinley resurfacing project.
Okay, thanks. The other one, I, Vanderhoof, so that's all right now. Melissa or Kim or Patty, you can knock me down when you go check the list. I lost two. Two doors. So I usually do four, so I'm down two. I mean, I'm working on getting another one, but I'm down two. I didn't get a financial statement from you, Kim, maybe if you could, please? Thank you very much.
Just read the distribution.
So automatically to the one that is, so when I send them out, I'll tell you what email address it originally went to and you can tell me if you want to change it.
Okay, that's fine. Could just be me in the computer, you know?
It could be an old email address that was originally registered with it.
JJ, yeah, just check the JJ one. Thank you for doing the Islamic issue. I would just like to suggest that the law of the land is separation of church and state. So unless you're going to do it for everybody, thank you for holding around. Just because, it would just be such a complete cluster. I do have one question. Did you want the paper, thank you for coming to our meeting, by the way.
Thanks for tolerating.
Well, we knew, well, we talked about you, right? Tom Cathy was down at the end of New Street. Did you want a copy of that letter about the DEP on Garden Street, just so you're all aware?
What did you send me today? Did you send me that today?
No, I didn't send you the letter. I'll make a copy and I'll drop it off. This is them asking the DEP for all sorts of inclusions, I mean, of exclusion for that piece of property. So what we're talking about is if you go down that little street right there, Guard Street, and you go down and stop before you make the left to continue out, there is a piece of property in front of you, you have the pump over here on the right, and then you have a piece of property, somebody wants to build on it. It's, it's in a flood zone, number one. So I'll make a copy and drop it off to you?
Yep.
Okay, fine. The, and I have just one quick question for Patty. What is going on with the cement guy and the trees that he removed behind that house?
So he did a tree permit.
Correct.
And.
So we submitted a tree permit, it went, the borough engineer sent some correspondence to them regarding the business plan and that's where it's at.
So we don't know if he's replacing or paying.
Okay, is he, did he put in a permit to take that house down or to do any work over there? Because part of that property is actually, belongs to the wires. I'm drawing a blank. Who does it belong to?
I'm not aware of it.
I'm not aware of it.
Did he have a permit for the building coming down?
Yeah, what's he doing with the property is what I'm asking before he decides to do it without any permits, like he did with the trees.
My, to my knowledge, I didn't know that he took a building down.
No, 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 he's not. I'm wondering.
Oh, he hasn't.
So there hasn't been anything taken down?
Okay, okay. So we just, well, you'll just.
That's exactly it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We got that.
I can ask him, I can ask Joe Solomon.
Just make sure that whatever he's going to be doing, that he has to get a permit and or go in front of the Land Use Board and I don't care how much money he donated.
I know the building's vacant.
Okay, yeah, but you can't just. Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Frank Maricon, this is my wife, Susan Maricon. We're the owners of 21 Maple and also 42 West Main. We currently have an application to the committee for redevelopment, one was open recently, for putting some apartments over the top of 42 West Main.
Can you just, I mean, just from my geography, I mean, exactly which building is?
Right across from Quick Check, the smallest, lowest, right across from Rockaway Hardware Store, actually. Small brick building.
Isn't the one that we just worked on?
It's a small building.
Definitely.
So it was brought to my attention that my project specifically might be discussed here tonight, so we did come in. We had proposed, we actually kind of started this before the whole revitalization programs was available with Sony. We were looking to not necessarily match what's on Main Street by putting some apartments on the retail space, but at least get a couple of apartments to make it worth trying to re-licensure. We actually currently have a three unit out of Maple Street where our rents and, I'm a builder, our trade, our rents are high, they're high for the area. We brought in great people over there, they're beautiful apartments, they're attracting good clients over there. So I plan on doing the same thing.
Is that nice to offer?
With my building, I appreciate it. Plan on doing the same thing with my building. We've got a little bit of resistance and I wanted to play nice because also the building directly next to me, all the Egress windows for the apartments are there. So I proposed something to get two apartments out of the borough back and not to interfere with the Egress windows whatsoever. But we just received something recently stating that I guess we don't need density for their, and they're trying to maybe get a seven to one apartment over there. I thought it's a perfect, it might be discussed for that.
So that would, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I want to add to that because we currently have a permit for our commercial space downstairs, which we've kind of delayed doing everything there until we had something figured out for above. But we did go for concept review and we proposed four apartments. And then it brought to our knowledge we cannot do the four apartments. So we went back to the architect and we redesigned the plan to accommodate two, which we discussed at the concept review, put the $3,500 up, took all the steps. I have my attorney, who's not here tonight, he's been in correspondence with McMahon and.
Deanna.
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 Deanna. When, when they can talk. I mean, it's very sporadic when they, when they come together, but he did speak with them this week. She responded to an email and said, it wasn't a definite no, we couldn't do the two apartments. It was a, we're not meeting the density requirements. So my confusion, I guess, as the owner is, at the concept review, when I was proposing four, why wasn't made mention that we could only do one? You know, and then versus we redesigned.
We've had a lot of thinking here and whatnot, thinking that, okay, we'll go down to two, won't interfere with the guy next to us with the Egress and we try to become a development camp. We've put the money up, we've been doing it. And now I think it's pending on this meeting because I guess they're waiting, they're waiting for something across the file.
They're waiting for, I'm waiting for a discussion for Jim, our attorney, and Tiana to have. But I guess the confusion as the owner is, what was really the purpose of the concept review? Which I understand that, but then we redesigned everything and I had a huge structural engineer company come out and do all of their due diligence based on the findings of I could do two apartments. And now, after many attempts in reaching McMahon and, and paying all the fees to, you know, Golda's Firm and all of that, it's just this week that finally correspondence has been answered that it's only one.
So they were asking if it would be similar, they may be from, consider that you would change the density and we could.
So yes, that's being discussed, yeah.
So there is stuff going in the background, we have a meeting literally prior to this meeting that you were discussed and the committee is discussing some items, so I think once the committee.
We're trying to work within the boundaries of what the meeting is.
So we are working with the planner.
Because I mean, we're trying to bring the building up, we're the little guy in between everything else. So I mean, and as you can see, our product is beautiful that we build. So I would be keeping character to the town and, you know, but for me to have one apartment.
So Tiana was not part of our meeting prior to this, so we spoke with Golda, she was in our meeting prior to this. So I think it's just a matter of all three of us, well, the planner, the engineer, and the borough, the three.
We appreciate it.
Together and working on this. There is, there is stuff working in the background, so. We will be in touch, we will get it to your attorney.
And I thank you, Patty, for your diligence and answering. I mean, a response is, needs a lot.
I mean, we're willing to put up the money to help this kind of comeback, but financially, holding one apartment, trying to figure. I need something that's going to support it a little bit more. Tax making's great and everything, but in reality, I have to make sure that it's cash positive. And I'm not looking to retire on it, but I do want to hold it up over there. One apartment would be very difficult to.
Now, we, like I said, we, give us a little time with it, but not a lot, I understand kind of money, but we are kind of talking, so.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for all.
The councilor, poll.
George Schuster, 215 Andrew Drive in Rockaway. My question tonight, and it's already been approved, but I wanted to question it before you voted on it, but I guess that's too late, but I was just going to ask about it anyway. Resolution 6924, which was the flow pipe behind West New Street, $6,500? My question is, why didn't the owners of that property pay for that, or why is the town on the hook for that?
So what we're looking to do, there's, I guess, sanitary issues back there and we were thinking that we were going to design it one way and come to find out, and Tom, maybe you can kind of back me on this, but the pipe goes, I guess, kind of flat. It doesn't, they were hoping it was going to go look down, so they would have some type of natural, whatever. So they're trying to see what kind of flow they're looking at right now because they need to, I don't know if repair it, but to improve the sewer pipes back in that area that flowed back there.
Okay, but, but let's say on any level, the town is responsible for that and not the property owners that are creating that?
I don't think it's on. It's not, it's not our property, it's our.
Or the art property?
It's our.
It's Tannod pipe. The Tannod sanitary sewer which goes through the woods by Donatoni Park. That pipe takes all its wastewater from Bargu Satch by you, Marcell's, and over to Crestwood Road, Mount Pleasant Avenue, Chestnut Terrace, all that wastewater comes to this wind collection spot. So they won't be able to change that one. It follows the Rockaway River. So that's all wastewater, so the beam meter, it's actually see how much water was going through there.
Okay.
Sorry, George.
So the owner is paying for it.
You're, thank you very much, sorry.
We're on the hook again.
Well, let me just decide that, so measuring the water going through there actually is a good thing. Now we can calculate infiltration, which also lowered across the Rockaway Valley.
What is happening?
Water from storms getting to the sewer line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, actually, you can calculate how much water is coming into the sewer, sewer system that you don't see. So it'll be monitoring through hourly segments, 24 hours a day. How long, how many?
Two weeks, two consecutive, I believe it's two consecutive weeks.
There you go. There will be monitoring, 7 o'clock in the morning, noon time, 5 o'clock when you're home, having dinner, then midnight when no one's using water. They actually see how much water is going through hourly. So it's a, it's a win-win no matter what. Again, we can say, huh, no, so much going through here. So.
I see 6,500, I see 6,500 and I say.
Money well spent, money well spent.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
No, no problem.
The councilor, public? Hearing done, closing of the meeting to public. Thank you very much for attending. Would you go for a session?
Motion to go for a session, second.